Welcome to the Fettford Council Corporate Services Committee here at six o'clock in the evening on Tuesday, 17th of September 2024. Without further ado, going to the agenda, 289, we've got a pretty hefty one here. Let's try and get a move on. 28924, apologies for absence, I can think of two.
Apologies for your seat from councils, Jeremy and Stira.
Thank you very much. Minutes of Corporate Services Committee for the 27th of August. Do we agree it's a true and correct record?
No.
Okay.
You put me on there. I'm not listed as attending, I did.
Very much.
Also, spell my surname wrong.
Spelled?
Spell my surname wrong.
Yeah, so you have.
Shocking.
It's me that gives the minutes, I do apologise.
I was there, I was there.
That's the case, do I have to... well, as they disagree, we don't have to propose that, it's just no.
Just no.
If I'm right. Thank you.
I just want...
29124, declarations of any disclosable peculiar interests. 29224, approval of payments. To receive and approve the listings of payments made since the last committee meeting. Away you go, Alan.
What I've done differently this time is I've actually put all the payments into the pack itself, so you don't have to look at any of the annexes. They are set out for each of the four bank accounts or sources of where payments are generated. There is, all payments are included, we do not go through and do a sifting exercise, every payment is included. And if there's any questions, I'm more than happy to provide supporting documentation or try and answer the questions if there are any here. There are four annexes, A is our normal bank paid, bank child direct payments. Two are direct payments and two are what we call backs payments and direct debits. And then the last one is credit card, the next year is credit card and the next year it just sets up all the supplier names. And I'll leave it at that.
Any questions?
No, no, that's just certainly.
Thank you very much. 293, logging and reporting of complaints.
This is a standard agenda item, in terms of the policy we require to put on the corporate services agenda, they're on that.
Thank you very much, it was nice to hear. Communications and website report. Hazel.
Alright, so since the last report, we had three press releases go out. It does say on there that they will be released this week, but we've got two of them down. There is another one that's been sent to me today, we're just tweaking a few bits and then that will go out tomorrow. The Guildhall Works one is still being drafted and is due to be released with the newsletter. As is the bus station press release, I'm just waiting for Norfolk on that one. The Norfolk Wildlife release that was on the list has been removed because they... They're changing how they're doing something, so they want to look at a slightly longer term result of grazing. And once we get that together, we'll release that with them. Online communications are all still active. Markets page is being actively used and working with the market coordinator to produce different content for that. Our Facebook engagement and reach is still a good percentage, so we're just keeping that on top of that. And we're continuing to work with schools with ongoing projects and actively encouraging them to share the information as well as us to try and help for our reach and engagement that as well. Volunteer groups are constantly being shared on our social media channels, updates on what they're doing. We're looking at doing some more leafleting and posters for, to encourage sign-ups for that. Town team works again are being added, we are looking to put together a, like a town team update on a monthly thing. I've spoken to Nick, because I know they wanted the report shared. It is quite heavy report and for general public to sit and read, I think sometimes it goes up to 20 pages. It's quite a lot, so we're going to look at doing a highlight section and then linking to the main report. And I have spoken to our heritage and events officers today who want to do the same kind of thing for the school side of things, so they will be coming through. Offline communication, poster sites still being updated. I was working with the events team on a handover from this, this has been handed over to me. So from tomorrow, I will go out, make sure they're up to date and do them on a weekly rotor of being checked. Newsletter is being drafted, to be delivered first week of November, I will contact the chair once we get enough together and we'll sit down and have a look at it and make sure it's all signed off before it goes out. Community groups are still distributing across East Anglia and we're looking to put together poster packs. Christmas is fast approaching, sorry to say two words. But we're looking to get put together the packs and deliver them to shops in town like we did with the summer events. So hopefully they will all be aware of everything that's going on, they will have all the posters in there. Obviously be able to advertise for us, but also for their awareness of the continental market and other bits that are happening. Press releases are still being picked up and shared on offline, so that's good, I think we are still set at 100% for that. Don't want to say it too loud, because I sent two out today, but hopefully we can continue with that. Website wise, you should have all received an email from me, the domain is being switched over tomorrow night, so there might be a slight interruption into your emails, but it should be back online the following morning. Everything's on track, we've had some training this week on building the new pages and it's all just kind of behind the scenes at the moment, so we're just waiting for the developers to get to a point where they can then start setting up logins and things. Privacy notice and accessibility notices for them have been redrafted by the town clerk on a break leave or another agenda item today. And we're doing some more accessibility training to make sure that that is accessible for all of our residents. It will also be checked for mobile tablets, all browsers, and we'll make sure the security certificates are in standards, so we will not have the issues we had last time. I am told.
Bold statement.
I am told, yeah. Newsletter, we've obtained quotes delivery, I was asked about looking at multiple deliveries. Everyone that I've gone out to so far has only quoted for one. We've asked for not one, but they just don't offer it at the moment. I am also looking at quotes for printing, but it looks like we are going to potentially go with the same suppliers at this point. But obviously it will just depend on the last one coming back. First drafter in process, in progress, sorry, and the designer we used for the layout was on leave until today, I believe. So once he's back in and settled back in, we'll get stuff sent over to him and start the layout. And it will all be agreed with town clerk, corporate services chair and corporate services manager.
Can I just chip in there about the newsletter, Hazel?
Yeah.
I thought we were building a relationship with About Fettford, oh, is this independent of that? Because I thought we were always some newsletter going into About Fettford generally, so that we didn't kind of...
No, so we, we work independently as they are a private company. We have used them for distribution in the past and they do get press releases through, through that, I think it was delivered by them last time. So they're just one of our suppliers rather than a built relationship, if that makes sense. But they do get all of our press releases, the same as all the other press suppliers in the area. Branding, we are looking at branding, we've had a few chats about it a minute ago with staff badges. You've all got your name cards on the tables which have got our branding on it. We're looking to make sure it's consistent across the council, so myself, Sonia Allen, have been looking at logos and things, there will be more conversations behind it. Well, you should all have consistent email signatures now, if there are any issues with that, do let me know, I'm happy to help you apply them. But it's making sure that our colours are consistent, our logos are consistent, posters, I know I was asked about it last time, we've sat down with the teams. We're making sure that they are using the branding and I'm building a full guideline booklet for them. Posters will all be passed through me to be signed off. At this point, I think if you have been put together for Christmas and Halloween, so they will probably just be using the kind of logo rather than the other ones, because it just depends on the event. So some things will have more of a obvious banner on them and some things, naturally if they're children's events and things like that, will potentially just use the smaller logo. But that's an ongoing discussion that we are having. There are a couple of examples of where we are already implementing it or looking to implement it there. And we will bring any guidelines to the committee, I believe, to get approval before it goes out.
Can I just ask, Hazel, have you sent out the...
Hang on, hang on Mike. Could I just say, Ron, could you in future please wait till the end of the report before questions? Otherwise, we don't really, you know, potentially we just get a series of interruptions, so... Sorry, I'm not picking on you, I'm just... Mike, I'll come to you. Overall, thank you Hazel, I think the difference between the output we're getting between now and when I first arrived this time, it's nine day. It really is, so thanks very much for that. In terms of the market, I'm really impressed with the stuff Yulia's doing. Is there an opportunity to get her some training in terms of, because I think she's already doing some work, isn't she?
Yes, so she's been slowly picking up a few of the social media, but she works with me, I'm still picking up on the Saturday as well. She works alongside me, Tuesday she'll come and speak to me in the office, Saturday she messages me in the morning, sends me over things, asks what's needed and things. So we're just looking at building the consistency with that and then looking to give her a bit more free rein on it, I've started to let her post. That's a, that shouldn't be annoying. But yes, I think Nick is keen to get her some training on social media, whether that's internally or externally, I'm not sure.
Regarding the website, one of the big issues of the current website and the one before it, protocols of naming files. How are we going to assure, ensure that from now on we have a standard naming protocol?
We are building a standard naming protocol and things like agendas and minutes, agendas and agenda packs are coming to me to upload, so it will be, will be a standard. And once we've set that, it will be continued and passed through to the committee clerk and being nodded up by... They are on the process of that.
Good, thank you, and the last one is, thanks for the branding, I'm really impressed, it makes us look like a proper council, doesn't it? I think those things do make a difference, Mike, thank you for your patience.
Yeah, thank you. First, I've shared the thanks you've received, I think that's really good progress. I'm just missing something, on the last line or almost the last line, all councils, all councils have been sent a template. Have you got, has that actually gone out?
Yep, so that was sent out beginning, it was just for the last meeting, I believe, the last corporate services. But if you haven't had it, absolutely fine, I can send it through again.
Well, if you haven't had a reply, probably, I probably...
No problem at all, and I am happy to help set it if you need me to.
Any further comments, Doug?
Yeah, a couple from me, firstly, an apology, because I forgot to send my emails and because I realised at the end I hadn't, so I just needed to do the copy. Wanted to just ask a few things, one is just about the newsletter, and I know your content is still going to be designed, but I just can say that I thought one thing that was really good last time in the newsletter was that what's coming out.
Yeah.
And to make sure I can have included, I think that's really effective. The other thing is a classic, might fall between two committees thing, so not quite sure, but you mentioned the packs going out to shops about Christmas markets. Which event in July, I think we discussed about getting shops involved in sort of like have displays or something like that. Have you had any communications about that at all?
So I have, I know the events team are working on it, I believe Katie is talking about putting a trail in and I think the packs will probably be delivered at the same time as asking them if they want to join in it and that will be advertised.
So they'll be, they're already pinned together, they'll be two sort of odd bits of communication.
They should be all done through.
Okay, thank you.
Anybody else? Thank you very much, Hazel.
Thank you.
You may leave. Thanks. 295, can we, no, yes, 295 personnel report. To receive note and discuss the personnel report for July, August, Sonia, this is on you, I believe.
That one actually does.
Is it? It says town clerk on it, to be fair.
I thought it said deputy.
On the paper, it does, my understanding is. I think in terms of just updating training, we've used a significant amount of money on training this year. I think our budget is looking quite, quite ill at the moment, but it's a matter of what we really are targeting. I think the town clerk has passed with helping council training, so a whole of training courses have been set up for councillors. So happy that will also help going forward. The only other course we've had in September is data protection, which I have on Thursday evening, so that's, hopefully I'll be a little bit more skilled than that. We are going to have to, there's a huge demand from our work team, as we've increased the size of the work team, there's more training that's required than any training of things like power tools and working on highways, because they're doing a lot more work. So we're just having a look at the options for that. I think we're going to have to wire some of the money from our salary budget, because I think that business is under spent there. This critical training and we are just making sure that we're getting value for it and it's targeted and that it's appropriate. In terms of staff movements, we have an events officer who's resigned on the 30th of September. So that team is really, it's down to three people, so that's a little bit of a challenge for us. We have an ongoing discussion with management of if we have to help as a forward office instructor. That's what we're planning to do and we will continue to do that. The new structure has been better done. We had one staff member who had queries, but I think that got dissolved by the town clerk and our HR consultants on past Friday. So I think we can now safely say that the new structure is accepted by all staff and is being implemented. There is some recruitment happening in terms of civic officer and a part-time events officer. So I think tomorrow night we will just ask for interviewers, typically there'd be someone from the corporate services committee who would sit on the interview panel. So I don't know if there's anyone volunteers, these will be, obviously be during the daytime, but we hope you to get those.
You're looking at me?
I am looking at you. It would be traditional, but it's, if, you know, we could do it offline and just see which councillors are available and then we can actually do it. But it is quite critical to be filling these positions, there's a civic officer position and a part-time events officer position. So chair, we will send out emails and request availability to people to do the interviews. The new staff contracts, we have finalised those, those are in the body of this meeting, so we're not going to comment further. But that's also quite significant improvement, those have been significantly out of date and they've now been updated for latest practice. So our recommendation to the committee is to let the support.
Thank you very much, having chastised, as it were, Ron for interrupting, I then did the same, didn't I? Thank you, I'm very happy to stand on that interview panel, should you wish me to do so, any questions? Thank you very much, the report is noted. 296, financial report for the year ending 31st of August. Yes, I'm afraid so.
What we try to do is, in previous months, we spent so much time putting together financial information, keeping it really up to date. So typically I would have started at the beginning of the month, August information for community and environmental services and then gone through the various committees. What we've done this year, this month, is we actually haven't done that, so we've gone back to July and tried to give a more of an interpretation of what the financial financial performance is relative to budget and start identifying financial risks that we have. So this report is the first time that I've looked at August numbers and what I've tried to do is, I have provided the traditional reports. We have gone through and provided explanations, I hope, that make sense in terms of the detailed line items. But what we've done is really just have a higher look at some of the bigger issues that face the council and which we need to take into account going forward. What I've done is, I've kind of gone through, from an expenditure perspective, we have a really efficient system. If a cost of an invoice is received in our office by lunchtime, it will be in the accounting records by the close of day. All our invoices, spy invoices, access within 24 hours. Our income invoices, it doesn't obviously work like that, so for example, we've got some costs where we have to still bill NCC for some work that we did in the bus stations in terms of the community and environmental services, those take a little bit longer to come in. We've also got some income that we do from the BPR, but we have to kind of comply with the grant conditions before we can submit that invoice. So from an expenditure perspective, our reports are very much up to date. From an income perspective, there's probably a little bit of income that's still coming in and we'd rather err to that side than obviously include income and exclude potential costs. What I've done is I've just written a number of points down, restructuring and salaries. At the last meeting, we approved a new structure, we improved a new salary structures for a number of staff and that has been, that will be costed going forward. We have to do a final analysis, but I'm feeling confident that we'll be able to accommodate those staff costs in the existing budget going forward. We did have the situation where we kind of, we're assuming that we're going to hive off the new Carnegie Guildhall charity from the 1st of October. That's unlikely to happen, so those costs will stay in the council costs. But the revenue as well, that we also said would stop and go to the other body will remain. So the latest projection is that there's not a significant variance in salaries despite us having not budgeted some of the team to be present until the end of the year. That's a risk that obviously as time goes by, we'll be able to manage and get assurance that that's not going to cause a problem. The second key issue is our vehicle costs are going crazy because we've got a bigger team. Our old vehicles were breaking down, we were having to pay the maintenance for them, so we've actually hired new vehicles, we've got four vehicles, but it is costing us a fortune. Unfortunately, we're having little bits of accidents every now and again, just before this meeting, someone apparently driven into one of the vans. So we do have an ongoing issue, tyres were damaged, but we really have to manage this cost and the town clerk, through our senior leadership team, we've actually tasked that process to happen and hopefully it will. The issue that keeps us really awake at night is our open space management. The recruitment of a grazer seems to go very well, but we've really battled to get grazing on Barnham Cross Common in particular. You'll see that we've got grazing on Castle, on Castle Mount, but Ford Meadow has also been a little bit of a challenge. And the risk to us is if we don't get those areas grazed, we have to actually undertake mechanical cutting. Now, to give you the extent of how much that costs, that cost us in about £21,000 last year. So it really is a cost, we haven't budgeted for it because we hope to have a grazer, but it really is a cost that had an adverse impact on us. The Blue Tongue outbreak hasn't also helped because we could get livestock into Barnham Cross Common where there's huge overgrowth of gorse and other vegetation that we should be managing. So we're just trying to look at different ways to manage that without the use of animals, but that is a huge concern to us. And, you know, those costs will be incurred in the latter part of the year, financial year, if that happened. The costing of the commercial activities in the complex, the Guildhall Carnegie complex, I promised this committee that I'd have a detailed report ready for this committee. Unfortunately, I don't, but I've got a detailed report ready for the heritage and events meeting tomorrow night, where we started to break down the activities. But I think it's really important that we actually start focusing on, we've broken it down, as a council, we do commercial activities, we do commercial hires, we do, we run a bar, we do those type of things, but we also do non-commercial activities and we do education activities. So hopefully the information that I've managed to develop recently for that, we will be able to bring into the normal reporting to this committee. So hopefully the next time we have a report, we'll have a little bit more detailed information on that. For toilet contracts, we had hoped to terminate the supplier that was undertaking the cleaning of our toilets and opening our PSs like the Sebretree etcetera. That that contract would terminate by the end of 31st, by the end of the last financial year. Unfortunately, we weren't able to do that because we couldn't recruit staff. If you remember, in September, October last year, we'd agreed in principle, we tried to recruit staff, we went through two sets of interviews, where no one actually pitched up for that. We now have someone in place who feeds our toilets, we've terminated that particular contract. But when you look at the financial results, you'll see that we've got a significant overspend on our toilet expenditure, but we've also got a significant underspend in terms of our salaries expenditure and hopefully they'll both set each other off going forward. We have a backlog in our building maintenance and that makes budgeting and financial control exceptionally difficult. We're doing an exercise to better control that, so for example, in this particular building, last year we significantly increased our maintenance budget because there was so much unexpected or backup maintenance. We're trying to do a more proactive process going forward, so that it's all quantified and one of the staff members in the corporate services is actually going around looking at all the maintenance that has to happen in this building and it's just routine things, you know, I mean the roof leaks in the kitchen and that type of thing. And we'll then have a plan, bring it to this particular committee as part of the budget process, so that we can take that forward. And then the last thing is, I think the new town clerk, so keep calling the new town clerk, that town clerk has identified concern with the significant variances that we have in our income and expenditure. It really is due to our lack of controls in certain areas, we overspend and underspend in various budgets. And by looking at ordering system, which the internal auditors have picked up in this year's audit, we have, we need to start addressing that. So that's the other issue that we're trying to do, so for the next six months, we can actually stop, eliminate some of these variances and ensure that we actually have a more detailed kind of overview process. But honestly, what we also do is we're really improving the title of accounts, because at the moment we budget in aggregate amounts. So if I had to take admin costs, admin costs consist of about five or six different cost categories. We're now breaking those down so that we can actually budget for them separately and it's so much easier to exercise financial control when you actually do that. In terms of the overall financial results, there is, you know, we are on track. We're not making significant surplus versus budget, but we're also not running a deficit versus budget. So if I could just pop my...
Thank you very much, I'm looking at you, Doug.
Doug, you've actually got his hand up first, but...
On the maintenance issue, building maintenance, stuff like that. Maintenance is an annual thing. Is it that because of all the upheaval and the pressures and everything that's going on, did you not plan for building maintenance over the last number of years? And it's now been examined properly and come to light, or is it something that was missed?
I'd be honest, I just think the budgetary process, you know, the starting quote of any building maintenance programme is you have a look at where you are, what's the review of it, when do you need to repaint, when do you need to service? And the problem that we were doing is, if you look at things like electricity, you know, the five-year wiring, we were doing it one year and it didn't occur the next year, so we reduced the budget, not realising that we should actually be doing it from three or four years' time. So there is a little bit of poor budgeting from our side. But also, what we've got to do is we've actually got to start breaking up those major costs. Because when you budget it aggregate, it's so difficult to work out what you're actually doing. But if you sit down, when we sit down next year, I hope people say, we have wiring, legionella tests, all these particular things need to happen and we'll actually be able to control this.
Oh, sorry, yeah.
What we've got to look at next year is most councils will have EMR, which is emergency reserve. So you have different pots of money, like you do your savings, exactly like you would at home, it's your savings account. So you'd have your toilets account, your buildings account, your electricity account, and what we've got to do is put money into each budget every year. So if something breaks down, we've already saved for the future of that, if it's been broken. And that's how we've got to progress it going forwards.
Okay, one more, very small thing, on the grazing and everything for Meadow and all that sort of stuff, are we not going to have the water buffalo in there or is there an issue with them this year?
The grazer that left because of dog attacks, which was two years ago, they were the ones that actually had the water buffalo. So they won't come back because they had significant sheep losses due to, and vet bulls because of the dogs off the leash. So we have lost them, we have been very successful in getting graziers back, we have got graziers that want to do it. Unfortunately, none of them have water buffalo, but they have different varieties of cattle and that, so hopefully that will help us. But the Blue Tongue is our big stick at the moment.
I got it down there. So that's not me, thank you very much.
Thanks, I'm done. Just a couple of things, firstly, just making sure I'm understanding the budget correctly as well. You're basically saying that the lack of maintenance of the Carnegie, for the Guildhall Charity Trust is sort of covered by staff salaries? Underspend on staff salaries, is that my understanding correct?
I think it's covered by savings, because we also transfer all the income out, for example, and the bar sales, things like that, so those come back. But what's happened is, I don't, I think we've had such, you know, we haven't had a town clerk for nearly six months of the year. So all those, all those amounts have actually saved it. But if we had created the Carnegie trusts, we would have had to put seed capital into it anyway, we'd have had to put £100,000 or £20,000 of money in. I think we're doing a budget revised, undoing a budget forecast for the rest of the year, just seeing where we are in terms of the current budget and therefore provide us the assurance, but we think the exercise... But we think the exercise I did for Corporate Services at the last meeting, if there is a small deficit, it is not, you know, I think it could be up to twenty five thousand, which is nothing relative to our salary bills.
Yeah, I was sort of just wanting to check how it's going to impact going forward now that we do have a time clock and hopefully going to fill the oppositions and discuss previously. We're not looking like we're going to go there short and suddenly it's going to switch six months from now.
No, I think I've got a task to do for the time clock in terms of really putting up that forecast and that will be done shortly.
Thanks. And the other thing, we're just on the open spaces and the grazing point, just to check. Something seemed to recall last year, coming in a bit of huge amount of money and it being somewhat painful. Is that thing out of the CNS amenities line? On the sort of budget, is that where it would live?
Well, we've got responsibilities because of SSI, so it will live in the old amenities. Community and Environmental Services. You know, it's.
I don't know who had to say this, I'm just checking where it sits and if we've got, because it looked like, if I understood it correctly, we actually have been spurned and underspent in that department, yeah.
We will end up with the overspend. We will end up with the overspend if we have to spend money on mechanical cutting. Are we looking at different ways of doing it? Because it's the disposal, that's the key cost of it. Actually, cutting is not that expensive, but people, you've got to dispose of all the vegetation that you cut back.
In terms of the line on the budget for the expenditure to work out, what is the CNS amenities line?
It's the open space management. So there's two line items. One is the open space contract. And then there's another open space. So that's repair of fences for livestock and that is also mechanical cutting if we have to do it.
That makes sense. Thanks. Don't worry about me.
Verity is not my strong point. I said verity is not my strong point.
No worries. Thanks. Thanks for the response. That's, yeah, just fine with the check.
Do we have to panic off Ford Meadow and everything and graze it? Why is it fenced off? Can it not just go wild and have a path through the middle and not have it grazed?
I think it has, we, as a committee last year, got management plans out for each of those particular areas, Ford Meadow, Barn and Cross Common. As part of that management plan, we have to do certain things.
Can we not change the management plan? If we cannot do that, that's a different committee, a different topic.
I mean, we're going to have to look at something going forward. But as the chair said, I mean, this committee won't deal with that. That's an operational matter. But I think it is something that we're going to have to keep considering because the opposite time that we spend on grazing is horrific, you know, because we can't find it. So it's interviewing, it's doing all sorts of things.
Okay, so that needs taking forward elsewhere. Great. Thank you, Terry.
Just a quick reminder, I have noted improvements in the cleaning of the public toilets in the last few weeks. It's very encouraging to make a point of going to them very often. Spent a lot of time in the town centre and I really think it's worthwhile. So far, so good. Can you tell me one very simple thing? Whom line manages the person who does the clean?
Community and Environmental Services Manager. So Nick does it.
Okay, thanks.
I think the improvement has been there for all to see, hasn't it? It's been marked. I'm very pleased about it. Any further questions? We need to approve the financial report. Are we all in agreement with that? You're against? That's approved. Two nine seven accessibility statement and privacy notice. I think, Alan, I think it might be you.
Like so.
It's not. So this one says time clock. You just don't, it's straight me up.
So I was tasked by the cons officer and the new org machine who are building our new website to create an accessibility statement and a privacy notice. This is what we are proposing as our accessibility statement on privacy notice, which has to go onto the website front page by law. We just want agreement with yourselves that you're happy with it or any changes that you would like made.
I'm very happy with it. Have we any comments from the floor?
Long talk.
Can I have a vote in favour of approving it?
You need to propose a second, or?
Oh, okay. Could I have a proposer? Could I have a second, please? Chris, thank you very much. All in favour? Can you just, extension? Two nine eight, and I think we might spend a bit of time on this. Christmas office closure. Away we go.
Well, you put my name in there, but you voted for it.
This is just a game you're playing.
To this day, at the council, what we've done is closed the offices based over the Christmas period and to encourage staff to take annual leave, we've actually given them a privilege date depending on where Christmas is and New Year is to do that. So what it does for us is it means that we save obviously costs, we save management time and it enables the staff to have a little bit of an extended period off without having to use up significant amounts of their annual leave. That really is the historical context of which this has been given. Every year, we report to the Corporate Services or PDS committees for consideration and that's the reason we do that, so that we can communicate to the staff.
Okay, so, yeah, first one, which is, I hope this year, have a full discussion next year. I'm proposing that one. Do we have a second, Doug? Those four, those against. Second, thank you. The second one was your one, David.
Do it this way, do it now, but don't kick it down the road. We do it now, but not next year. We'll have a discussion again.
Do I have a second there? Those four, those against. It looks like the first proposal is carried, I pray. With every opportunity of making your case again.
That's fine, you know, or just kick it down the road.
I have a bit to think about it in the meantime, I think. Done. Thank you. Thank you, everybody. Two nine nine, employment. So we've got a few bits here. Can we sort of whistle through these? We've got some stuff, sort of, sort of handbook stuff. Employment contract for staff. Now, I'm assuming everybody's read their notes here. Two nine nine, three four, employment contract for staff to receive review and agree on the new contract of employment as part of the staffing restructure review process.
Can I just say, I have written this and I've passed it through to the union. The union rep is happy with it. I've also passed it through to HR consultants. They're also happy with it and got me to make a few changes. And this is the end product.
The sniff test is, it's a good piece of work.
There's a couple of bits and we had looked at it earlier. Council property, people, members of staff using council property for personal reasons and stuff like that without being charged for it. That's not really mentioned in there anywhere. That hire of room isn't always paid for.
This is something we come into another place.
Yeah.
This is not to do with council policy property.
No, this is a contract.
Okay, fair enough.
This is a contract. We wouldn't put that kind of thing in a contract.
Everybody happy? Two reasons. What do we need on that? Just an assent?
We need a resolution that they.
Okay. Could I have a proposer, please? Second, Chris, all in favour? Against abstentions carried? Then we go to data and document retention policy. Same thing then.
So the reason I've written this policy is because I've found lots of documents that we should have destroyed, basically. So this is the NALC data and document retention policy. I've just made a bit, I've changed a few things just to fit into the first town council. So this is so that we can go ahead and destroy lots of items that we need to destroy and retain those that we need to retain.
Massive scale of office space, I'm guessing.
Massive.
Very small question, just curiosity. Is there a reason that some are indefinite in red and some indefinite in black?
It's just a typo.
Thought it was, I just noticed. I think that was missing.
They need to all be in red just so that people are aware that that needs to be kept. So we'll make them changes.
Everybody happy? Could I have a proposer, please? Ron, second there. All in favour? Everybody against? No abstentions. Three oh one, dignity at work policy.
Just NALC, a couple of years ago brought this in for dignity at work. It's to stop bullying amongst staff, staff being bullied by councillors, vice versa. That they brought in for the council to agree. This is a NALC written policy. I didn't write it. I just copied it from that website.
Comments?
For doing this, I'm shocked it wasn't in place already.
I think this could be said of several of these coming down the line. If I, could I have a proposer, please? Any, second there? Ron, in favour? Against abstentions? Is that a comment on the policy there? You're all right, that's. You okay to continue? You sure?
Yeah, yeah, sure.
Okay. Is it just a tension seeking? Three oh two, twenty four, staff handbook.
So I was tasked with looking at the policies and procedures. And when I looked at the policies, there is, the staff handbook was not fit for purpose. It was very out of date and badly written. And so I've made a new one, put the policies that I believe are important and we will add to it as we need to and as councillors decide they want more added into it. But this is the start, starter for ten, really.
Thank you. Comments? Proposer, please. Chris, a second there. In favour? Against abstention? Are you intending on voting, Mr Blackwell?
I have frequently. But I agree with that. I've nodded as well, over time.
Three oh three, twenty four, credit card policy.
Again, we didn't have a policy for credit cards. Unfortunately, there was a need for one and so I've created a credit card policy that's fit for town council to use.
Thank you very much. Comments?
Yeah, I think they're brilliant. Fantastic. Really brilliant that we can actually read something that's in black and white here for God knows how many years in the future. And why did we not have this a decade ago?
I have a proposer, please. David, well done. A second there. Alan, thank you. Those in favour? Those against abstention? Three oh four, twenty four, progress on actions from previous meetings. I think this is back to you.
I saw someone's calling you, didn't he? I think what we've done is, we have done some of the actions. One of the big challenges we have is, and I know it's been sort of a little bit of a short topic, is we go to so many meetings and we just add to the action plans. And I think that's really what's happened at this committee in particular because there's only been one person that's been able to work through them. So there has been a little bit of progress, but there hasn't been as much as there should be. And we're hoping that in the next three months, that we'll be able to actually go through and eliminate most of these. We have got a new process. The time clock has introduced a new monitoring process. It's in the process of being developed at the moment. Each of these will be given a target date on a management spreadsheet and we will actually start managing that and doing that. There has been some progress, for example, on the rates and that and the issues with the GW standing for. We have another whiteboard in the office that we both occupy and we just added all these tasks on and we actually, we focus on it. But there hasn't been that significant progress. I'd be conceding the committee if I had to say, well, this progress shows, this progress there. There is, one oh fours, you know, the councillor's email signatures, we've done that. So there are some done's, but they're very far in between.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Alan. Comments?
Hold on to get your mouth on.
Just to let you know, on the new action spreadsheet, there would be a named person next to each action. Councillors can then say, this action hasn't been completed in this schedule and they will have a name who they can ask why it hasn't been completed, rather than just generic. You can then go to the officer straight away and see why it hasn't been done or get an update.
I think that's a really welcome improvement.
They say we're a privileged thing.
We've gone past that.
Any other comments? No decision required. We now move to three oh six, twenty four, exclusion of the press and public. To consider resolving that pursuant to the Public Bodies Mission to Meetings Act nineteen six in the press and public, be excluded for any remaining items of business on the grounds that publicity would be prejudicial to the public interest by reason of the confidential nature of the business to be discussed. Oh, yeah. Do we agree to exclude? Thank you.